I'm assuming everybody wouldn't even have to drive by that place to know what it looks like. I mean, I've been looking at that spot for years. Are you guys the owners?
I am the owner.
Do you own the -- did you just recently buy it?
I bought it in September.
No, we have nothing.
Well, there's no staff report. Well, we have pictures. You want to go?
It was just a brief introduction. Why don't you go ahead.
Okay, and you are?
Yes, hi. My name is Sean Gaiagos, Assistant Planner in the Planning Division. The project before you today is indicating the staff report is a two-story multifamily residential townhouse building with three units. The intent of the study session is for the commission to provide preliminary feedback to the applicant regarding the architectural design and site planning for the project at 517 Tyndall. No action will occur tonight. The next step after the commission provides their comments to the applicant is the applicant will submit a formal application. And at that time, they will return to the commission for formal review and action. And at that time, it will provide members of the public, and I don't believe there are any here, if there were, it would provide them an opportunity to come back and to speak to the commission. This concludes staff's presentation. Is there any questions? Thank you.
Okay. I did have one question. I don't know whether, you guys are the property owners. There look like there are two or three, or two other buildings that look similar to this. Do you guys know if that's true? The one in front of it and the one like next door or two doors down, it looked like the same layout, the same.
You mean, looks similar to the?
To what's being proposed.
Yeah.
I know that property directly adjacent to it is a similar design, not similar architecture, but similar layout.
Yeah.
And then there are other properties in the area that are similar also.
Yeah, okay. Just curious.
Well, at this point, we want to hear from the applicant. That would seem to make sense, right?
Hi, my name is Walter Chapman. I'm the designer for this project. The property owner is here as well, Les Poltrak, if you have any questions for him. Basically, to address Commissioner, okay, I'm sorry how to pronounce your name, Mike.
Commissioner.
There are other three-unit projects that are built on Tyndall and some of the other adjoining streets, and this is typical with these narrow lots that you can only get three units in, where some of the lots are double-wide or two purchases that have been merged.
Right.
So what we've ended up doing here is we have the front unit on Tyndall with an attached garage. And then there is also a street parking and there is a large redwood tree here in the front yard. So this will have very much a residential feel on the Tyndall side because you'll see an entrance and a garage and, you know, again, a very common residential appearance. As you come back around to the alley side where we have two garages, our challenge again was we didn't want it to look like an apartment building on the back. So you'll see on the renderings how we've designed this to keep a residential feel on the alley side, as well as providing some landscaping on either sides of the driveways and introducing some, I believe we had a tree planned in this spot on our landscape plan. So the middle unit has a detached garage. It's not a detached structure, but it's detached from the unit itself. And the back unit, actually, its living space straddles above the garage of the middle unit. So it's not like a row houses. Some of the other projects you've seen in town, they look like a series of buildings all next to each other. So this is designed to look as one complete building and yet create the sense again of a residential project. So skipping past these, we're going to show you some renderings instead. I want to skip past those. So here you can see again is the front unit, living room, dining room, kitchen with garage. The middle unit is a big open floor plan with kitchen, dining, living. Each unit has a half bath. Each unit has laundry.
How many bedrooms? I can't really.
The front unit, all of the downstairs is living space.
You didn't get this?
I didn't get a packet.
You didn't go pick it up?
Well, no, I picked up the packet a week ago on what was supposed to be.
Yeah.
And I returned it.
So Jerry, I'm going to flip to the upper floor plan because that's where the bedrooms are.
Yeah, I'll be able to catch up in a minute.
Okay.
Just can't read it.
The front unit has three bedrooms and two baths. So we have a master suite, two children's room with a hall bath.
Okay, I got it.
The middle unit is only a two-bedroom unit, both with a private bath, one with a slightly larger bedroom, so it could be, you know, a parent's room and a child's room. And the back unit then has a larger master suite. It has the largest square footage of the three units because it does straddle the garage of the second unit. So that actually is a very nice-sized master suite with walk-in closet and again, two children's rooms. So we've laid this out, so again, a lot of the emphasis is facing Tyndall and facing the alleyway. And at this point, Les, do you want to call up the grayscale renderings? There we go. And there's the grayscale right there.
About one, two, three, or four?
Just pull up one. That'll work. We're going to walk you through these. So on the, this would be considered the backyard of the units. One side has the entrances are facing the north and we put the quote "backyards" on the south side to get more sunlight. And we've left the roof here uninterrupted or unbroken on purpose so that solar panels could be placed along this roof plane. And we're using a lighter reflective paint so we can bounce a little bit of light into the alley that's between the two units. And what you'll see is at the lower level, we've kind of created a base to this with a horizontal effect. And Les, let's go to the next one. Yeah, those will be individual yards on that side. Now, on the opposite side, which would be the entrances to the units, two of the units, this is the middle unit two and this is the back unit three, which accesses from the alley. And there's a pathway that leads all along this side of the building. What we've done architecturally is we've used horizontal redwood siding to signify what is the front of these units. So each of these has a covered porch and has horizontal siding, whereas the garages and this lower bay, these are all done with flat roofs because we wanted to again create a horizontal theme and a vertical themes to play with each other. So let's go to the next one. And this should be facing Tyndall, I believe. Oh, no, this is the alley. That's okay. This is fine. As you can see from the alley side, we have again all three elements. We have the lower level with the horizontal plane. We have the vertical element with the horizontal siding. And then you can see how the stucco kind of wraps around to tie to tie all the building together. And we'll go to the next one. And this one's from Tyndall. So again, here you have the entrance with a covered roof, the horizontal siding, the garage again with the different colored stucco, and the horizontal bands to create again some horizontal theme because the building is otherwise one big box. And as you come down the backyard, these dash lines just help you to see where the units stop and start. There will be no defining feature, certainly not red striped lines on the building. The fences will separate the yards. Let's move on to some color renderings. We, sorry, apologize we didn't get these to you sooner, but we've been working with the colored renderings, playing with different materials and color. And again, this is the entrances on the public pathway side of the building. So again, you see the horizontal siding and redwood kind of defines the front of the units.
They probably can't see your pointer, so I'm going to move.
Oh, they can't. Okay. This is for the public to see.
Yeah, we can. We can see it a little further.
So again.
Not the green light.
Not the green light.
You can see my hand.
Oh, see, I should be using it. Sean, this is absolutely useless to me. Thank you. For the audience.
You should do it. I'll mimic you.
There you go. So anyways, as you can see, the theme is we've tried to create an obvious entrance and draw to the public so they can see, oh, here's a porch in front. Entry doors and the redwood siding signifying the front of each unit. So we can click to the next one. You have to actually close it and open it. Yeah, there we go. And this is more from Tyndall. And of course, these units are so close together that you really won't see these side yards from the street. And even if you walk down the public access, you'll be looking up at the building. So very little of the standing metal seam roof is going to be visible. We're thinking this point of just doing it with comp shingle because we're starting to realize that it stands out a little awkward having just one element of standing metal seam.
Are you saying you won't be able to see this from the alleyway?
Well, this is from Tyndall. This is the view you will see.
From the other, right. How about from the alleyway, the other way?
We can switch around. Let's go to the next one, Les. We'll go all the way around the building.
I think the alley is 16 feet wide, so if you're looking head on, the answer is you actually won't be able to.
And now this is also still from Tyndall. This is still from Tyndall. There's that large redwood tree will be in front of the structure.
Right.
And then as we move around the sides of the building, these again are where the backyards will be. And then we come around. And now we're coming around from the alley corner. Again, you'll see the side yards and then you see the two garages and then finally.
So that's two or three different roof materials?
At the moment, if you count the flat roofs, it's three. But again, you won't see the material on the flat roofs. Those are again to create a horizontal band to break up the height and mass of the two-story walls. Then what we've done is we've introduced the two-story element with the siding above the garage to again break up the mass. So you have a lower bunker kind of where the garage is. You then have the two-story element with the siding. And then you have the main mass of the building, which is the cream-colored stucco. And we go one more. We'll come back around to the other view from the alley. And this is where the public walkway would lead you back to the entrances. So what we've tried to do is with the, we're going to go back to a comp shingle on the entire structure because the, we thought this, a little bit of standing metal seam roof would add some interest, but it actually, it's distracting feel to the structure. So we're thinking of integrating it all to be comp shingle on the roof. And that way, introduce one less element is being on the building. Yeah, we can take one more. This will bring you back all full circle now to the entrance side, the public side of the three units. So as you can see, it's not designed so much to look like three separate buildings. The whole building has as an integrated theme of a mixture of single-story elements, two-story elements, vertical elements, and distinguishable entries. The other items inside each of the units, we do have a 96-square-foot storage unit that we actually did the size for a bicycle. So it meets the actual physical dimensions of a locker for a bicycle. So those are integrated into each of the floor plans.
You want the floor plan?
Sure, let's go back to that and we'll need to, I can click us back one. There we go. So actually, where those are located is underneath the stair landings of two of the units is where the bike locker. You can just roll your bike right in. And the third unit, it's a little harder to see. It's between the two garages. And one of those is an entrance for a bicycle, but above them are two smaller storage lockers. Those two particular units get a little extra bonus storage area above the bicycle locker. Mechanical units are all integrated, are in the attic, horizontal units. You won't see those. AC units are placed outside on the private yard sides, so each individual unit can contend with their own AC unit noise. As far as trash enclosures, I'm going to take us back to the site plan. And we have three different locations. Each unit has their own. So yeah, the one on Tyndall will have, will be integrated in with the fence between the building and the property line. And those can then be rolled up to the curb side for pickup. And then on the back unit, there is an enclosed area that also has all our utilities, electric panels, yeah, the electric meters and gas. And also there is a spot there for the yard waste.
The gas isn't there?
The gas isn't there. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's just the electrical and the, one of the units, trash recycling and a yard waste container for the property. I think we only need one for the minimal amount of landscaping to be maintained.
Oh, and there's common electric. This common stuff is going to be there.
That basically is utility yard for the development. And then there's another one between the two driveways and that is for unit two. So, and we also have a spot for a bicycle lockup. It's a type B?
I think it's a class two.
A class two?
A locker is a class one bike unit and basically something you can lock the front, a wheel and the frame to is a class two. And that would be class two inside or class ones.
Right. And we've located that up against a structure which is on the adjoining unit. And what we're hoping to do along there is to plant a trellis so that we can grow a vine to hide that other building and then put the bicycle lock type two in front of it. So there's a place to, again, for public coming to visit to lock up their bike.
So Walter, did you say that the trash bins for the two back units are just wheeled out into that alley there?
Yeah, we've actually left a spot because we're landscaping between the driveways. And if you notice, right on the alley, there are a couple of pads of concrete where the trash cans can be rolled out the walkway and set on those pads for pickup and then be rolled back in behind the fences and gates. And similarly, the other one rolls out to curb side on Tyndall. So I believe that kind of covers the big picture of how we approach this. The secondary, second-story side windows, we've kept those as narrow windows and if we want to go to one of the.
Elevations?
We can go to grayscale or elevation. There you go.
Well, yeah. These aren't really color.
These aren't, yeah. So we purposely did horizontal windows for egress, I mean, vertical windows for egress versus horizontal because there are the units right across the way and we didn't want to have big picture windows looking into the bedrooms. Whereas you can see there's sliding glass doors out to the lower yard. So we did our best as far as privacy can be done in this type of scenario.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question.
Do we call on the, this is not for anticipation from the audience, is it?
From the public?
Public? Did you two want to speak?
Well, if you're going to ask.
Okay, well, if you are, you have to fill out a form and simple.
But if you wanted to reiterate, you had comments about the public, if they were attending, what the process was. I think they came in after that. That's right. So Sean.
So the public is aware, this is an informal process for the commission to provide comment on the preliminary application. The commission will provide comments regarding the architecture and the site planning. The applicant will return with a formal application. And at that time, the commission will review and provide formal action. And the public will also have an opportunity to provide additional comment at that time, too.
Yep. That's the normal process, yes. Okay, all right, great. Okay, let's.
Questions for the applicant?
Questions. Alex?
Start on that side.
All right, Alex.
I can go.
This is just a small question, but it's an inconsistency that I want to make sure I understand which is correct. So if you look at the conceptual tentative map, A1B, you show the units between the garage. You have something labeled as exclusive use for unit two. But on the next page, sheet A2, at least in our packet, it's probably more appropriately getting split up between bike storage in one garage and then storage in the other garage. So I just wanted to know which ones actually, or are they on top of each other?
They're on top of each other.
Ah.
They are. So that, the portion on top is actually exclusive use from each side, so each get half of the upper locker. Whereas the lower level is all to unit two for its bicycle, or no, level three for its bicycles, unit three for bicycle storage.
Okay, because on A1B, it says exclusive use for unit.
Yeah, the attorney's having a really fun time trying to describe each of these spaces because it's all integrated above and into each other, so.
I'm going to be more just respond. It's just the engineers.
The engineers, yeah, they have to.
All right, so that was the question I had.
Alex? I'll go.
Yeah.
Okay.
You want me to go? So can you flip the picture to the other side? Because I just had one question for you.
Well, this is on the.
I want the entryway side. If you go up to the top, you're going to have to move the mouse. So you see the grayscale. If you click on the headers across the top, click on probably the third one over, you'll catch it.
This here?
Yeah, I think if you do that one.
Oh, it didn't work. The front or the other side?
I want to see the other side.
Yeah. Well, it's one of ours. There we go.
There we go. So I noticed that there's these lights that are there. Are those going to be on in the evening then? Are they on a timer of some sort or will the units be switching them on and off?
So these are not the exact fixtures.
Okay.
What those are is those are the walkway lights. And they will be pointed down because, yeah, I'm very conscious about light pollution and I don't want to be having lights shining in the neighbors' windows. But there obviously is a requirement for illumination for the walkway and that's the intent. This is not a perfect representation.
No, that's fine. I just was curious what that was. And then the other question, are each unit going to have some sort of light illumination in front of their door?
Yeah.
Yeah, each will have some can lights tucked up in that flat ceiling shining downward instead of outward.
Okay. Those are my questions.
No comments?
I have comments, but.
Oh, I don't have any questions. No, no questions.
I don't have any questions. I have comments.
Does Alex have any questions?
I guess my questions are just around, it doesn't look like there's eaves over some of the doors and sliding glass doors and waterproofing and just how is that?
Yeah, we basically are just going to be flashed and papered in, you know, the typical construction techniques. We have some areas that are covered over the garage doors on some of the units. You know, architecturally, we didn't want to get it too heavy with covered porches, so we've tried to keep it simple. I don't know if there's really a concern though, from a weather standpoint, if they're installed correctly.
Okay, then, comments. Start with you, Mike.
So I really like the design of this. I think that you've, I mean, it blends in well with that neighborhood and things. So the only thing that I saw, and it was not in the packet, but it's actually, if you can click on the Tyndall, on the color drawings.
Yeah.
And I don't know if they're official, but the color of the stucco on where the garage is, it looks to me like it's different than what's above and it just looks really busy to me. And same thing with the roof, which you already commented on. And that's pretty much, I mean, I know that we're early in design, so, but that was, I'm hoping that the colors will complement each other.
Can I comment on that for you or just take input?
Well, either way, I don't care.
Yeah, we wanted to, we do want to distinguish the main bulk of the building independently from those lower level. Some of the colors didn't show up as we had hoped when we're doing these renderings because computer generation is always a challenge. But we do want to maintain a distinction between that horizontal lower level versus the main mass of the building. So there will be some type of two-tone color used. But again, for the roof, we realized it was getting too busy with the standing metal seam and we've.
And it seemed to be like the aluminum, I mean, this is really picky, so that's why, but just the color of the gutters and the color of the window frames is different. I mean, that's what I, when I look at this building, that's the only thing that jumps out at me. Everything else, I mean, I like the bike parking. I like the landscaping. I like everything about it. It just, these colors just don't seem to, and you're right, until we see the, I was going to wait till, we're going to get the.
Material pad?
Material pad and see all that. And I think that's where it'll be easier, so that'll be really important.
Good to hear that because we're actually canvassing all kinds of people about color because it seems to be a very, a big topic with realtors, property purchasers, and planning commissioners, so we.
So that's my only comments. Otherwise, good job. I really liked it.
Yeah, I also think that you look at the floor plan, it's unbelievable you were able to fit all that in so nicely. And every room seems to have, you know, good quality, you know, views and light and windows, even the bathroom. So I'm very impressed with that. In three dimensions, however, I have a few thoughts and you don't have to, you know, I'm just going to go through them. I'm sure you had reasons for a lot of the decisions, but I'll give you my initial thoughts on it. I just feel like there's no consistent style on the project. The flat roofs are sort of a modern language. And then the hip roofs, you know, they can be worked into anything really, but there's just kind of a inconsistency on the top and the bottom because of the change of roof style. And of course, I'm glad to hear you're just keeping the one shingle roof finish as opposed to two because then that just adds a little more inconsistency. So I think Phoebe had mentioned in her letter, and I read that, and I agreed with her that we kind of don't have a style in mind and it doesn't have any character, the building. It seems like, you know, we're adding roofs here and there, but there's no, not a lot of logic to where things go other than for functional reasons, not for aesthetic reasons. And so I think the one view that matters the most is the one that's, you know, facing the street.
Tyndall?
Yeah. And for that one, what I don't like about, what are we looking at here?
This is a sample of a house.
Oh, okay. Oh. Oh, okay.
Let's look at the view from, I believe it's two.
So yeah, front elevation, what I didn't like about that is that's the front where the tree goes. Yeah, I felt like this horizontal line that you're creating, I like it. I think the top and bottom floors have to be separated like that. It's nice to bring that line along, but maybe a change of material from top and bottom also would be helpful to where we do continue that band across by, you know, and it could, doesn't have to be an actual roof coming out. Maybe it's just an indentation or a change of material at that line. So I thought that would help that elevation. Also, the rear elevation where that tower is, where the garage is, can you go back to that? The rear elevation. Yeah, that tower, I think, suffers a little bit from too much, too skinny and tall and not enough articulation between the window and the garage door. And it would be nice to carry that line, that horizontal line that you have over the garage around the building there somehow. Not necessarily in three dimensions, but some change of material. So that's another comment there. The windows that you have, the vertical windows, I can, I see your reasoning for it. They do feel a little tall and narrow again. It's so vertical. And I wonder if they have to be so tall. You know, one thought I had, and I don't know what industry standards are, but the height of the ground floor on the interior is the same as the one on the upper floor. And it seems to me like bedrooms can afford to have, you know, a foot less, maybe go down to eight, eight and a half. But then the living room can enjoy a higher ceiling height. And so I wonder if this, if that's something that you would consider to give more height to the lower level and then lower the upper level. And then that would help with the windows because if you're, I assume you're trying to meet egress. 'cause if you're, I assume you're trying to meet egress, and that's why you have to make those windows so tall, 'cause you're starting at a higher headroom, so, you know, that's another thought, to just add a little more height to the lower level. And then you mentioned that you are, the living, or the outdoor living space is on the south side, which I think is great, and I wondered why we don't push the building further towards the north side. I see that there's some indentation in the building on the lower level, you know, where the entrance to the middle section is. I wondered why we don't even give more yard to the, to these buildings by pushing closer to the, to the north side. And, you know, maybe they can have even more use of this southern exposure there.
So, would it be appropriate for me to respond to just a few of these for the commissioners to understand? We can't raise the ceiling height of the lower level because we don't have enough room for the staircases to work. One of the reasons the floor plan works so well inside is that we, by keeping the ceiling at nine feet, I don't have room to add another tread or two to the length of the staircases. And it is our preference to keep at least a nine-foot ceiling upstairs, 'cause we don't want, as you go upstairs, to feel that it's squat once you've been downstairs. And yes, the height of the windows is based on the egress sill height and wanting to maintain an eight-foot door or header height throughout the upstairs of the unit. As far as moving the building over, we're pressed against setbacks, we don't have, I can't move the building to create more yard, so what we've done is we've tried to make the best use of the physical dimensions of the site as we could. Architecturally, I'm concerned about making it look like a box on a box. If I do too much horizontal bands, then it looks like there's a box sitting on top of a box. When having, it's nice to create a little bit of verticality to these units. I might be able to expand the band over the trash enclosure area on the alleyway side so that we get kind of that floating cantilevered roof over the trash enclosure. That would break up the two-story wall element of the lighter stucco. But part of the character of that two-story element on all of the areas with the redwood siding, I'd like to try and keep that consistent if we can, because that keeps it all, again, from looking like stacked boxes. So as far as the style, I did flash up temporarily the property on Campbell. This style of combination of flat roofs and hip roofs and stucco and siding is actually very common in Los Altos. This is an example of one that we've done that's been built on Campbell. I could go around Los Altos and show you another 20 homes that intermix these materials and horizontal and flat roofs and hip roofs, because this is a very common contemporary style that is actually popular with a lot of our clients, and we have done probably half a dozen of them, and I've seen another dozen around town. So it's, it is a style, it is a theme that is consistent, and we've carried it around our building, so it doesn't look like we just have a front or a back, but we've really tried to integrate it around all.
Well, I normally, I would go last because of the chair, but, but the difference between this building and your building are the pitched roofs on the first floor. And to me, that's a major error, because it just, I mean, look at, look at how the articulation on this building, and then go back to your building.
Right, right. So the flat roof is across the front here on this one.
I'll go back, go back to your building and just, and I'll let you guys.
Yeah, we're working on it.
That's the one comment I had to get in when you said.
Right.
With no comparison.
Right.
See, these are, these are horizontal, and they're more like bands than they are roofs.
Right, and that was intentional, because the problem we have with these lower-level units, if I start putting hip roofs on them, it looks really bad, because they're all different depths, they're all different widths, and what you end up is a lot, a bunch of little hats on top of each of these single-story roofs, and it blocks the mass of the main portion of the building. So really introducing hip roofs on these, it's gonna get very cluttered with a bunch of different, 'cause each one's a different depth, and the way hip roofs work, their height of them is relative to the physical dimension that's being covered. So we looked at that, and you end up with a whole bunch of silly little roofs on top of each one, and then there is no consistency.
You don't have to, I don't, I'm not an architect, I'll be with you, but.
So that's why I'm bringing this up, because we've spent a lot of time working on that architecturally, and if I start putting little shed roofs and hip roofs, it really clutters up the architecture. Right now, it's very clean, and that's the contemporary style that we're shooting for.
Let me just add one thing, on that elevation, the, I think there was like a, maybe a foot, one foot six inches or five inches, and then a two-foot, three-inch that pop-out on the middle unit, and then the kitchen on the.
Yeah, they're different depths, the pop-outs.
And I, and I see that the pop-out is then, has a roof.
Floor plan.
And a higher plate also, so you're basically kind of using that to articulate the building, but I feel like it's so little, I mean, you, you're, when you have a pop-out, it would have been nice to have a little, you know, deeper or bigger difference in the surface change. It would just make, especially since you're changing materials on that elevation, it would make it a little more effective if you were to pop it out a few inches more. And when I asked about the setbacks, I assumed the setback where the garage is, the line where the garage is, that's where the ground floor setback is, and there's that space that's not used up, right? Am I right?
Yeah, the second story setbacks, we can't move the second story walls.
Right, but on the ground floor you can, so what you're suffering from is that the ground floor and the second floor are matching, you know, it's a vertical wall, but if you were to widen the ground floor, and I know you have limitations with floor area, but it would help, you know, give you that, allow you to have a roof over that ground floor before you meet the second.
Well, again, we have very limited flexibility with the size of these rooms, you have to understand the width of these buildings are very narrow, and any square footage that I shift downstairs, because everything's based on coverage, not square footage.
I understand.
So manipulating walls in or out changes the whole design of the structure.
Right.
And what we have now is a very well-thought-out and crafted design that works with the setbacks, with all the zoning rules, and creates very workable floor plans. So to try to manipulate that is very difficult to do, because.
Well, it's a study session, right?
Sure. Well, that's why, that's why I'm bringing it up, is that it's, you know, we've spent, we've spent months trying to make all of these pieces fit, and it's just, we can't, it's very difficult to alter something that already works for something that's gonna be much more difficult, that may not work.
And what I'd be concerned about is the next building.
Right, that's.
Because you're approaching into their space, and you've gotta leave some openings so that sunlight and things can come through to that.
Sally? Yeah, so, can we go back to the color renderings? I'd like to see the front door side, the two.
The longer side.
Yeah, the longer side, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, okay, that's good. So, I'm not an architect, but I'll just give you a couple comments, and this is, this particular comment is not necessarily the direction you want to go, 'cause it will increase the cost, but I think that actually if you went with the entire roof being standing metal seam rather than the composite, then you're gonna achieve your more modern contemporary look, and it will tie in with the horizontals better. I know that's the more expensive way to go, but I think if your horizontal bands are achieved with, you know, some metal material similar to your standing metal seam roofs, then it actually begins to look contemporary, like the example on Campbell you've shown us.
The diagram with the plane, we just want to demonstrate something for you, because this is something that we also came to some.
Down.
You have to go back out.
I have to go to the PowerPoint.
No, it's not PowerPoint, it's back.
You want the roof plane, what do you want?
No, the projection that you had for the person, the visual, of where a person's standing looking up at this.
My picture?
Yes. That is.
And then, can I ask a question of David and John?
Oh, okay.
So will they be providing as part of their plans the, how it will look in the neighborhood? I don't know what that's, you know.
Yeah, a street profile, a street profile.
Yes, that would be part of the formal application.
So the, an answer to Sally's question is, we thought, oh, here we go. This is the line, no, no, it's not. All right, she didn't, okay. There's a line of sight at a certain point where, because of the height of that second story roof and the angle of it, you won't see any of the standard metal seam roofs, certainly down the whole length of the building, because it's not visible from anywhere, and even from the street side looking up and the angle of the pitch of the roof, yeah, it really wouldn't.
Yeah, so we're looking at it in isolation, and your point is a good one, so.
Good point.
Okay. Then, the other thing I was gonna say, if you go back to the one we were on, or not go back to it, I think I know what it looks like. Your doors get lost in the siding, at least is how you have them rendered right now. I really could stand to see a door that makes some sort of statement.
Sure.
Rather than a red-sided door on a red, long red-sided wall, so all three doors just blend into the beautiful siding.
Are you talking about the, really, oh, actually, that one you just had?
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's really Tyndall that I think we should, that a lot of the, this is the backside.
Yeah, no, this is the two front doors, and then there's the other one that shows Tyndall. All three doors are, no, this is the wrong, this is the backside.
You gotta close it and open it, there you are.
No, he's, actually, you should be able to click the top, but.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, again, it may just be this rendering.
But if you go to the.
There, so there's two of them, and then.
That's the back.
That's the back.
Spin the building.
But you can't see those doors, other than when you walk.
But I, as a homeowner, want my door to make a statement.
Gotcha, okay.
So I'm just, you know, I agree you can't see them, you can see the Tyndall one.
Yeah, that one.
This is the door, you can't see that door.
Yeah, so.
Certainly, the type of door is, in fact, it would be, you know, we have to look at what type of door would be appropriate.
I'm talking about to make this personal for the homeowner, you're right that those two on the alleyway are not gonna be visible, but, you know, everyone's front door should speak, you know, this is my.
And we'd want each of the units to have a comparable quality front door, so we don't wanna down, downgrade the side units, we'll certainly make sure they have a similar.
Yeah, but you could pick up on, you know, the metal theme, or you could do something to actually make it pop a little bit and not be busy.
Yeah, very good.
Okay, I'm, that's me.
Alex? So I.
Turn your mic on first.
Turn on my mic. And I agree with Bahi in that, I know you've done a lot of work and tried to fit a lot in, but I think we have to be equally concerned about the exterior as the interior. And for me, it's just, this is night and day different from the representation of that other home on Campbell that you're referring to, which has much more articulation, feels a lot more interesting, it's got a lot more kind of setbacks on the upper floors, and, you know, I'm really struggling with, kind of with the design here. So, you know, I don't really have much more than that, other than just kind of overarching, an overarching kind of feeling that it, you know, it needs some more articulation, 'cause there's just a lot of planes. I think the other thing for me, and I don't know how this, you know, I think having this garbage section for unit number two weigh, I can deal, you know, I think I'm fine with the parking not being attached, but having to go all the way out there to, you know, get rid of garbage, I don't know if there's a way to incorporate that some other way so it's more attached to, to the unit.
That's the way it is in all the other buildings in the neighborhood, it's in the back and the front.
Most people carry it out to a big dumpster in the alley. We're about the only units that are providing something that is integrated and screened in as well as this is, most of them are pretty bad.
Yeah, when I went by there, 'cause I drove down the alley, it had like trash cans everywhere. It's, it's like, what's the right thing?
And then just, you know, the practicality of getting the garbage cans on unit one through landscaping out to the concrete curb, obviously, and whether it would make sense to just include the enclosure to screen the AC unit on that unit as well.
Only sometimes it's a noise issue if you screen them too much, they need usually.
Or landscaping, or whatever it is.
Landscaping would work there, yes, certainly.
Yeah.
You good?
That's all I got.
All right. Well, I got a few things. So, I realize the limitation in the lot, in the rectangular lot, and that's, that makes it very, very, very difficult to come up with a, you're limited on what you can do for designs, I get that, but in my opinion, you favored functionality, and I'm hearing by your comments, 'cause every time we say something, your comment is, well, you can't do that because of this, that, and the next thing. So you favored functionality to me to design. So I look at this and I go, well, I wouldn't move here. It's, it looks very bland, I'm just telling you where it is, and, and maybe it's the colors, I know, I do a lot of offices and apartments, and I know that the last four years, the color has, the color is gray, internal and out, that's the color, but to me, this doesn't, I would take some of the windows and pop them out or in, do something to take away the rectangle, straight look, I mean, if you can't do anything with the vertical roof, which I don't know why you couldn't, then could you do something with the windows? Could you pop them out, so that, so that it doesn't look like one straight line on each side? And now you're gonna tell me you can't, because it's not functional.
Well, no, it's not a matter of that, it's, it's putting the wrong architecture on the building, because what we're doing here is very contemporary, very clean, I could show you hundreds and hundreds.
To me, it's almost, it's too clean.
Yeah, well, it's.
That's the point.
Well, yeah, so maybe what I, maybe would be helpful is, is that if I could show the commissioners basically a slide presentation of contemporary and modern architecture, because what we're doing is consistent, it's consistent with itself. The theme of the building and the elements that we're using are used all over in contemporary and modern architecture, so if we start popping out elements, that's what you see on traditional homes, and if I do box windows, or I start doing, they look contrived, when what we're trying to do is have these three components to the building. We have the main mass, we have the lower base elements which are horizontal, and we have the few elements which are vertical. We're taking three very classic pieces of architecture and integrating them together. Now, what we have done is we've put different materials on each of them, maybe that's what we shouldn't do, maybe that's why it's becoming too of a, much of a contrast for you. If I put the whole thing with horizontal redwood siding, then it all just runs together, and we aren't emphasizing, again, the just position.
Then it looks like one building rather than three units, and I don't think we want that, I don't think you want that either.
No, it doesn't, we purposely made it so it doesn't look like three units. What we have is, we have three components of architecture, which, vertical elements, horizontal elements, and they're holding and mass, screening the massing of the main structure, which is controlled by setbacks. So, I mean, those are some of the most classic elements of architecture, so I'm struggling to see, I mean, I can, I can simp, I can take away some of the, what's making the building work architecturally is the fact that we do have these components in just a position to each other to create a little tension and drama, which is what the modern architecture theme does. I can water it down, I can try to throw canopy roofs on it, but what that does is it takes it away from its own integrity. It no longer has any integrity as a contemporary building, it starts becoming something else. So I mean, I.
That's over my head.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, it's, maybe.
But one thing you might wanna visit is the city council conversation, 'cause we're just an advisory body, the city council is gonna see the same things we do, and they're gonna make comments, and I know the building at Marimani and, I wanna say B Street, that hasn't been built, we looked at it, we made essentially similar comments. we looked at it, we made essentially similar comments, the builder didn't change anything, they went to city council, and city council set up basically the same things.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And, and did not want to go forward with that building. So, I just want to make, I don't want you to go through this process and then...
I understand, and I'm, and I'm trying to figure out what things I can do after hearing this, that I can, I mean, I can, I can tone it down by less materials on the building, and then you're not seeing such strong elements. But certain things are contrived if I start putting them on the building, and then, then the building has no integrity.
No, I understand what you're saying, I'm, again, trying to help.
I understand.
So this is an example, so I'm still a bat here. This is, this is the Tyndall face. Okay, so I'm, so I'm going to do what I call a drive-by, right? I drive by here, I look at the building that I just passed, and I look at the next one. I don't even see this one. It's, it just doesn't, for instance, there's no, the next one has an, a front has an architectural design that immediately catches your attention, immediately. This doesn't, this doesn't catch my attention. Now, will they sell it? It's a phenomenal location, there's no question about that, so that's good for you. But, but from an architectural standpoint, does this catch my eye? It, it doesn't, it just doesn't, for me. So, but I'm not an architect, and you're talking about contemporary this, contemporary that, that's over my head, I don't, I only know what I like. This, it's not my job to like it or not like it, I'm just, I mean, functionally, it's great. The three bedrooms, I mean, perfect, you know, the bicycle, everything's, everyone's, yeah, it's great.
So, one thing about this in particular is you're going to have that gigantic redwood tree, so to, to me, this actually, yeah, right in front, to me, this looks a little bit Tahoe-ish, I mean, yeah, I buy the Modern Contemporary, and I was on Design Review when their Campbell House came forward and all that stuff, so, so I can do that, but when you think of this in the settings with the tree and everything, again, I still got to push for a door, but I mean, I think it could be very attractive from the tree.
I get it, yeah.
The landscaping will...
I took the tree out, I forgot the tree was there, that's right.
I mean, it can, you know, do that, so I don't know, I can...
That tree may not always be there, too.
It's pretty big.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I'd like to see this house with the other two structures next to it, just to see how it kind of, because it's hard, I mean, I appreciate...
With the tree, that would be nice, too.
Yeah.
That's right, the architectural thing I'm talking about may be moot.
It might be, because you're not going to be seeing this stuff.
You're not going to be seeing it, yeah, you're right, you're right.
Well, again, depends exactly where it is, but you're, it's, you know, so anyway, it'll make a big difference to, to see that, I think.
I just want to add one thing, because you said, you know, that with modern architecture, and I agree, can't add too many bells and whistles and still call this modern architecture. I really didn't see this as a modern architecture, all I saw was that horizontal roof kind of going around, that's, that, that is modern language, but there are different ways to carry that through and make this a more appealing building, you know, it doesn't have to be a lot of bells and whistles. Like I said, it could be some sort of continuation of that line without breaking up the volume or continuing the roof. It could be some indentation or change in the material from top and bottom. I think that would help it. It could be some sort of awning or trellis of some, you know, it could be a metal, very contemporary-looking thing, but that could also add some three dimensions. So I don't necessarily see that because this is modern, it can have more articulation. I do also want to repeat, I don't like when you have a change of material like that, the two volumes, the roof, everything is changing, but you only have a, looks like a 10-inch, well, 12-inch difference in, you know, the two surfaces. I would, I would like you to push it out some more. I know the plans are all set in stone, but if there is a way to, to distinguish between, if a volume is really taller and has a different materials, it should really be, you know, a little more distinguished from the surface right next to it. I see the garage and, and the actual, the siding are the same surface, so it's sort of accidental that it just, that line ends, the wood ends and the stucco begins, but there's no indentation in the building. So I think those would help make it a little, those changes would make it a little more fulfilling.
Right, anything else?
Yeah.
Okay. Alex?
Yeah, that's, can we go back to that elevation?
The elevation or the rendering?
Of the long side or the Tyndall?
The Tyndall entrance.
The Tyndall entrance.
Those are all the...
And we also, when you come back, it would be nice to see the fences mocked up, because that'll make a difference to how it looks.
Okay, here's one of them. Can I give you the other one?
I'm also looking forward to see the material board.
I think, I mean, that's why it's hard to...
It's hard to tell. I'm sure that it's better than I think.
So just to the left of this door, that would be the staircase going up?
Yes.
And so would there be, maybe actually making that a bigger window going all the way down and breaking up the mass between, between the two there?
I'd have to look at the height of, you know, how much it exposes the handrail and of the stairs as we're going up, I just have to check that and see.
So, I mean, just something to really...
Yeah, we, we had talked...
The landing's halfway up.
Yeah.
Halfway up the first wall is where the landing is.
All right, so if we brought it down lower, we had looked at bringing it down lower, it's already about an eight-foot-tall window, it's a big expanse of glass already. But yeah, I mean, that's something we could look at versus...
It'd be more than one window.
We could break it up into two, again, whether that starts to look busy, or, you know, that's all, some people like it, some don't, but we could break it up into a series of windows, even three, to create a different effect on that area.
Yeah, and maybe some other window on the, on that plain wall that's there on the...
Stucco face.
The stucco face. Yeah, but I mean, you could do something on top.
Horizontal window up in there.
Yeah. I just think it's really a...
Little stark there, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't, shall I close the meeting? That's it? Okay. Study session is closed, thank you.
Okay.